Good evening. And welcome to a meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach held Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendo.
Present.
Councilmember Lester.
Here.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Here.
Vice President Fiamora is absent. President Finn.
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Dan Creighton and Corporation Council Frank DeCranis will now have a salute to the flag.
Please remove your caps, place your hand over your heart. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming out on a cold night. I would've came two weeks ago if I knew Roy was going to introduce block voting, but I couldn't get out of bed. But that might've almost done it, Roy. Going to have Dan give us the city manager's report.
So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. I hope everyone enjoyed the holiday weekend. So we have a very full agenda tonight with two presentations, so I'll keep my report pretty short. Long Beach Polar Bears had another very successful event in support of the Make-A-Wish Foundation on the 9th of this month. Nearly a half a million dollars was raised, bringing the 25-year total to over $10 million. Thank you to our CSEA workers, lifeguards, police department, fire department, and all of our partners from the county and neighboring fire departments for helping make this a successful and safe event for all. That being said, we did hear from some attendees about the boardwalk not being shoveled. Residents and visitors should be aware, and it's been the case for a while, that Ocean Beach Park, inclusive of the boardwalk, is closed after Labor Day weekend. The city does not shovel or de-ice the boardwalk during the winter and has not done so for over a decade. Plowing the boardwalk even with a rubber blade has proven to cause damage to the boardwalk. Additionally, if the city attempts to undertake snow removal efforts on the boards, liability to taxpayers increases with the respective slips, trips, and falls. CSEA did work with the event organizers to improve the safety of the boardwalk in the area of the event, and that is the area where people were invited to enter. In the event of snow, please use common sense, stay off the boards if they're not cleaned off or they look too slippery for you in your current condition, and stay away from areas you feel will present a danger. We'll continue to consider the park, including the boardwalk, closed in the off-season. Couple of short public service announcements before I finish my report. The Clerk's Office will be holding a food drive. They do that every year. It will be in the lobby as well as the Clerk's Office, and it will be going on for the next month. They do that in connection with Island Harvest. Residents living in the walks where the water utility upgrades are ongoing are reminded that they need to sign access agreements with the contract in Novelli. Work cannot proceed without these signed agreements, so please call our Public Works Department at 516-705-1011 if you have any questions, or if you need another copy of the agreement. They will be happy to help you schedule some time to meet with Novelli. Also, at an additional upcoming council meeting, I will be making a presentation about some changes that will be made to summer beach park operations. As you'll hear in one of the reports coming up from Bonadillo, there is a concern that beach park revenue is not being collected. People are walking by, the ticket takers not paying, so we're making some changes to the boardwalk and to the collection. We believe a significant amount of revenue has been lost due to the weaknesses in our point-of-entry system, so staff and I have spent the off-season coming up with a multi-pronged approach to address these issues. These measures will impact how people access the beach, and we want to ensure everyone understands them and why they are being implemented well in advance of the summer season. So I look forward to making that presentation sometime in March, if not, it will be early April. With that, I will conclude my city manager's report for this evening and proceed with our two presentations, one from our financial consultant, Bonadillo, and one from the sewer consolidation project in our public works. So thank you for your time, and if I could get Ina and possibly Bonadillo up here to start their presentation on the financial audit that was done. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, but they may not be able to without the mic.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Alan Walther. I'm a partner with the Bonadillo Group. We are the auditors for the city, and we have completed our audit of the city's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2024. Before I start my presentation, I would like to give a big thank you to Ina Resnick, the city comptroller, and her staff for all of their efforts in helping us to get the audit done. Audit is a collaborative effort, and we can't audit what is not provided to us, so thank you very much, Ina, and the rest of the comptroller's staff. So our role as your auditors, our primary objective is to audit the city's financial statements. In conjunction with that, we also audit your federal awards under the Uniform Guidance Rules and New York State Department of Transportation expenditures as well. Required communications items of note, no significant new accounting policies were adopted this year. Significant estimates and disclosures have been identified and described within the financial statements. We had no disagreements with management related to financial accounting reporting or auditing matters, and there were no significant difficulties in performing the audit. Our opinion on the financial statements will be an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that we can give on your financial statements, and that is the opinion that all the users of the financial statements, the bond rating agencies, the State Comptroller's Office, et cetera, will look for. With regard to your government auditing standards report, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control, and no instances of noncompliance with laws or regulations were noted. Financial highlights with regard to the government-wide net position, the government-wide net position is all of the funds of the city combined together, plus your long-term assets, minus your long-term debt. Your net position at the end of June was a deficit of $244.7 million, and your net position actually increased during the year by $9.3 million. Some of the highlights of your statement net position, your current assets, were approximately $103 million. It's predominantly consisting of cash and accounts receivable. Your non-current assets were $136.7 million. That's your capital assets, your buildings and equipment, as well as your low SAP assets. That's your assets that pertain to the fire department. Deferred outflows for pensions and other post-employment benefits were $63.3 million. Your current liabilities, which is the current portion of long-term debt, accounts payable, and bond anticipation notes was $80.9 million. Your long-term liabilities were $420 million. That's your other post-employment benefits liability. Your bonds, your pension, and your compensated absences. Deferred inflows for pensions and OPEB were $37.3 million. At the fund level, the fund level is your operating statements. The fund level, your total fund balance for all of your governmental funds increased by $7.2 million. The general fund, fund balance, the general fund is your primary operating fund, decreased by $175,000, resulting in unassigned fund balance of a little bit over $14 million. Your general fund revenues were under budget by approximately $1.2 million, primarily because of shortfalls in New York State aid. Your expenditures were under budget by approximately $3 million due to conservative budgeting across the functions. And your capital projects expenditures totaled $22.6 million. With regard to your uniform guidance audit, again, that is your audit on your federal awards. We had no internal control findings or compliance findings. Your total expenditures were approximately $10.5 million, and the major program that we audited was the Hazard Mitigation Grant, which is seawall renovations primarily. With regard to your New York State DOT audit, again, unmodified opinion on compliance, no internal control findings. Your total expenditures there were $1.9 million, and the major program that we audited was the statewide operating assistance funding. That's the extent of my comments unless there's any questions from the city council members.
I guess it's not a question, just more of a comment. I just, I want to commend Ina and her, or truly Ina Resnick and her staff. These reports have gotten better every year she's been here. When she started, we were borrowing money to pay the employees. It was so bad. And we're at a point now where translating from accounting to English, it doesn't get better than this. And that's just due to Ina and her staff and the work they've done over the last six or seven years to get this place turned around. So I think it's just she deserves to be commended for that.
Roy, you have a question? Mike?
Well said.
I'd just add to it, it's only my first year up here, so I don't have anything to compare it to, but I will say that every interaction with Ina and her staff has been extremely, I'll just say, effective and good from my perspective. So I'm not an accountant, but this report, to me, appears to be very good, and thank you for your hard work on it as well. I'm encouraged, but I'm not surprised because it's been a pleasure working with you, so thank you, Ina. Thank you.
Thank you.
So comments from the, no, no, there's not a comment. Okay, good. Thank you for recovering me there, Dave. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Russell, do you have the team from here to do the sewer consolidation project?
So we have Eric Mills from Hazen Sewer, who's part of the joint venture, who is going to explain the sewer consolidation project and where we're at currently with construction.
Thanks, Russell. So we actually did a presentation on this aloud about the financing stuff a couple of years ago, so this might be a refresher for some people or a renewal. Yep. Is that better? Well, it's two inches from my face. I'm doing my best here. So the genesis of this project is that especially after Sandy, the wastewater treatment plant here in Long Beach was severely impacted by that, a lot of other facilities by the ocean here, and was already facing a lot of pressure from the state regulators to improve the nitrogen output from it because it's basically both South Shore, AKA Bay Park up there, and Long Beach are significant sources of nitrogen that there's not enough flushing to get it out to the ocean. So it creates a lot of stress on the environment there where you get a lot of nuisance growth and also inhibits a lot of the grass growth on the wetlands and stuff there. You get a lot of environmental degradation. So sort of with a not-so-gentle nudge from the state, entered into an intermunicipal agreement with Nassau County where the treatment plant would be converted just to a pump station and then having a pipeline that is going to send it to South Shore for an increased level of treatment. And people here might be aware also of the Bay Park Conveyance Project where the vast majority of all of the treated effluent coming from there is going to go to a deep ocean outfall out at Cedar Creek. So it really should result in a very significant improvement in the western bays here for, you know, the whole community to be enjoying here. So it's going to be a 24-inch forest main that's being built right now that's going to be connecting it to the South Shore Treatment Plant, and we'll have the details on the following slide. And the next one, please. Right. So this is the treatment plant as it stands today, and the main part that's going on here is the influent pump station is here, which normally drives the treatment through all of this. The effluent comes out here as it's treated, is to convert this pump station, the influent pump station, into a heavily fortified from storms with backup power. Everything's going to be elevated to make it sandy-proof. And the rest of this eventually would all be demolished and restored for future use to be decided by all of you. And so just some details on there really where there's going to be an equalization tank that's going to help deal with the very, the wide range of flows, especially from summer to winter. You know, the population here really changes a lot from that, and like I said, emergency power, et cetera. You got the next slide, please? And so showing for the forest main, the majority of this is going through is with a technology called horizontal direct drilling, where you're literally just drilling a big hole, and it's being done in three different sections where you drill, and then you're going to pull a pipeline through. First, there's a steel carrier pipe, and then there's high-density polyethylene, a type of very heavy-duty plastic pipe that goes inside. So it's sort of a dual-layer pipe in a pipe. So that's done in three different segments. They've already done the first one that goes from the mainland over to Pierce's Hastic over here, and they're drilling currently. They're going to be pulling the pipe soon for the second one, and then in a couple of months, they're going to be doing the last stretch. As some of you might have noticed, they've taken over this portion where the boat launch and stuff is by the ball field nearby. And as it stands on the schedule, they're supposed to be totally out of this space by July, and we have a website that will be putting updates on that for all the public spaces. Can I get the next one, please? So very small, can disturb this anybody, but really showing with the schedule that it's taking us out into really for all of the construction to be done, including the work here, is going to be in March of 2027. But as I noted, a lot of the stuff that's really affecting people here should be by this summer, being out of the park spaces with the pipeline for the most part being done. There's still going to be a lot of work on the Nassau County side. There's a lot of cut-and-cover work to be done over there that will be continuing through the year, but all the pipeline work should really be done this calendar year. So part of this was to also restore a lot of the marshland that was in those hassocks. If anybody looks up on Google Maps, you can actually see where back in the '60s when Nassau County did the outfall pipe for the Bay Park Sewer Treatment Plant, they really just did a, they just dug a deep trench through the islands. You can't do that anymore, but, and you can sort of call it the scar. You can see it from space, and it's really to restore a lot of that that was damaged when that was done in the first place. So it's really to try and fix a lot of that up and have the whole environment recover there for that entire stretch that was damaged back in the '60s with that construction, but thus an additional 100% of that area to fix a lot of the other areas that have degraded again because of the nitrogen pollution I was talking about before. So that's going to be executed as part of this, and then there's additional work that's going to be done in a separate project for Hastic's restoration that's going to start in a couple of months. So additionally, so what feeds the Long Beach Treatment Plant, there's actually three pump stations throughout Long Beach because Long Beach is very flat. It can't get all there by gravity, and so the county will be taking over these stations as well, and they're going to get a lot of work to be mitigated to also be hopefully sandy-proof for those level of floods so that everyone will have continuous service even in a significant storm. And I think that's all there is. If there's any questions? The tunnel? Well, okay, so there are trenches on land, you know, as you get to the water, and so that's probably about 10 feet deep. It depends on the utilities, but when it comes to the HDD, you have to go, there's a minimum amount of cover to go under the seafloor. I believe it's around 40 feet. Below the bottom of the ocean. Oh, okay.
This is part of the city manager's report, so as such, it's not open to comments or questions from the public, but that's a good question, Craig.
It's very deep.
Yeah. So thanks for asking it, but...
Anything for the gentleman.
So the comments come from the council. John?
No.
Roy?
When do you think we're going to be completely done?
It's, per the schedule, it's late spring of '27, ideally.
That's when Nassau will take over?
Yes. And then ideally you can decommission the rest of the site and go from there.
Actually, I do have, there was a, when the project started, there was a deadline by which the project had to be completed based on the grant funding, and has that date now been extended because the project looks like it's taking longer than anticipated?
Well, okay, so the main reason for that was because GOASR was, the New York State Office, the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, was disappearing. And then that money was going to go back into the general fund. So what happened was subsequent to us working out all these deals in the schedule is that GOASR was revived as RHC, Resilient Homes and Communities, and other state offices, so it was able to be kept in because they were very interested in keeping this project going.
Okay, so we're not at any risk then of missing a deadline and the money dries up?
No, sir. And also that was front-loaded, the way the structure was that that was actually expended first regardless, but there is some, you know, if we do go beyond this, it's near the end of this year. If we go beyond that, there's just some paperwork to go on that side for some reporting, but it's no risk to that.
Okay, thank you.
And just a quick comment. So we think, so there were delays in the beginning, obviously. Do we think that these delays were hopefully front-loaded and the spring '27 target date of when the county can actually take it over and be ready? Do we foresee, I mean, obviously, things can be unpredictable, but do we think that we've gotten over the hurdle of what possibly most of the delays could be?
Yes, because it was stuff with PSENG and also unanticipated finding the mercury that was clearly from another site, and we worked that out. It took some time, but worked it out with DEC of how to handle that, and those were the two main hurdles that we've moved past.
Great, thank you.
The mitigation that you pointed out, I think it was in the third slide, the wetlands aspect of it, that was from the initial plan? That was initially planned that you guys were going to complete that work along with this?
Yeah, that was really, it was, I mean, you'd need to restore from what's happening from the construction anyways, right? And you would make it better than it was before irrespective, but that was part of the NEPA and the SEAKER, both the state and the federal permitting, was to do that. When I talk about it being 100% beyond of what's happening from the construction and also what's happened previously from the installation of the outfall tunnel before.
Right.
That was part of the permitting agreement, that it would be, okay, you're going to fix everything you messed up, and then the other environmental degradation that has happened because of the water quality is to repair that as well. So it's sort of 100% of the affected area from all the work and 100% more area on top, but that was part of the agreement.
Yeah, that's an important part of the, I mean, we want this bay to come back as much as possible, if not 100%, so thank you.
Yeah, between this and the conveyance project, I mean, it's going to make a very quick impact. You're going to be able to tell in pretty short order, yeah.
Great.
And if I may, just for people that may not fully understand what this project is doing, right now, we put about $70 to $75 million gallons a day of treated effluent from two sewage plants that are discharged, one by Magnolia Boulevard and the other maybe around Laurelton, right off the coast of Long Beach. That will stop. It will now all go out into the ocean. That's going to make an immense difference in the quality, water quality in the bay. This is probably the biggest environmental project Nassau County has done in decades. This is going to make a big difference.
I just, for the record, I just want to clarify one thing with the conveyance project, that that is going to take the vast, all the dry weather flow and the vast majority of it, but there's sort of a physical limit because it is going 12 miles away that, under big rainstorms and stuff, that the existing outfall will still get used when you've got significant wet weather, but all the dry weather, when it's the most damaging and all that, it's well more than 90% is going to get sent to the ocean.
All right. Thank you very much. That's good news.
Okay, that's it for that.
Okay. Onto the rest of the agenda. Now for the rest of the story.
Okay, onto the agenda. First item is a public hearing for local law amending the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding financial and ethical disclosure. So this item essentially removes the financial disclosure form in its current form out of the charter and keeps it in the same form as it currently is written within the city Clerk's Office. This would allow updates to be done in the future without changing the charter over and over. It is also one of the suggestions of the Ethics Committee. Dave Fraser is here, as well as myself, if you have any further questions on this issue. Also, Stephen, I believe, Pam Bianchi is here as well.
John?
One thing, I think we got an amendment we need to make on the form, on item eight on the form that talks about if you hold a position within a political party or a political committee, you have to file. It asks for the name, and then where it says contract description, I believe that's a cut-and-paste error. They probably cut and paste from number seven. That should be the position the person holds. So contract description should be changed to position.
We'll make that update.
What's that?
We'll make that update. It doesn't need a motion.
Does it need an amendment? Okay. Then we don't need an amendment.
Roy? Mike? I think, just make a comment, and I think this is a more effective and manageable form than the previous one. So I know you worked hard on it, right? So thanks for the work. Appreciate it. Comments from the public? Okay, we'll close it.
Onto the regular calendar. Item one is a local law amending the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding financial and ethical disclosure. A hearing has been held on this item already. Item two is a resolution requiring certain individuals to file an annual statement of financial and ethical disclosure for the 2024 calendar year. So although this item is related to item one, it relates to financial and ethical disclosure, it also is something that's required annually to explain who is required to file for, file that paperwork. It said for its, who will file for the 2024 calendar year. It is similar to what was done in the past and aligns with what the Ethics Committee has sent forward to us. Again, Dave and I are here if you have any further questions, as well as Frank and other legal counsel.
Roy? Mike? Stumped on the panel up here. Questions, a comment from the public? All right, thank you. Close that.
Okay. Item three is a resolution confirming the appointment of members to the planning board of the city of Long Beach. Okay, so this one's a long time coming, and I'm very proud to say that we have a board ready to go for the planning board. This is something that we've been looking at for quite a while and are very excited about. This item is to appoint the members of the newly created planning board. We did have many applicants, so not everyone could be picked, obviously. There was some logic into how we picked, though. The first two I chose were from experience and consistency. We wanted to have one pulled from the zoning board, Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as one from what used to be called the Planning Advisory Board, now the Land Use Committee. With that, we had five positions left. There were a total of seven. We talked with, we interviewed pretty much everybody who was in town. We talked with, we interviewed pretty much everybody who was in town that had applied early enough. We did have a lot of people apply, surprisingly, from out of town, which, which is not, does not work for us. So we did look, we asked a lot of questions about development in the area. And what was particularly important to me was people that asked questions related to the Lloyd Aquifer and just had basically general ideas about planning in the city and, and development in general. So there are three three-year terms here. There are two two-year terms and two one-year terms. That is to stagger the, the membership over the years to make sure that every year at least two people are being reassigned or reappointed. I would like to thank everybody who applied. I mean, this is not a paying job. This is a volunteer position. I really appreciate all the input from the community. I think we've chosen seven good people. I'm sure there were other people that will be just as good and we'll keep them in, on file and look to bring them on in the future if anybody that we chose now leave. But I do thank them for donating their time and effort and making this happen. I look forward to the planning board being set up and really doing a lot for the community. And I would suggest that we, we approve the seven people that are chosen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. John, you have a question? Roy?
Dan, who was on the interviewing committee? I asked, who was on the interviewing committee?
It was basically myself, the deputy city manager, Phil Rigona. We did have input from Robin Lynch on the, who's, who's the secretary of the planning board. And I did have input from Patty Bourne as well at certain points.
And were their resumes available for these people?
Everybody submitted an application online that was applied, that applied.
Would they make public?
No. They're not. Nor is any other committee, by the way.
I, so when were their training? There is a, some sort of training and after that, we're all very excited to get this planning board up and going. How quickly will they be up and going?
So I believe the planning board has a meeting set up for March. Training is already pretty much ensued. We did have some Lula training while we were setting up the planning board. I did invite people from the zoning board to that training, as well as the land use committee, what used to be called the planning advisory board. One of the members actually on this has, had went to that training. We also did, because this was supposed to be on the last agenda, we did start training with the expectation that the zoning and planning board would be invited to that. I did invite them and if we need to change out appointments, we could retrain people, but I, there's never harm in overtraining. And we wanted to make sure we got the ball running and started that immediately.
March, first meeting, great.
March, I believe is the first meeting. All right? March 6th.
March 6th, right.
Excellent.
7:00 PM, right here.
All right. I have one comment myself. Thank you, Dan, for taking care of this process and Phil and Patty and Robin as well. Looking over the candidates, I know a couple of them. I don't know some of them. Some of them are on, ones on the zoning board. I'm very appreciative of those people wanting to do something for Long Beach. I have an active part in it. I, I commend that. When I talk to people outside of Long Beach and I mention that we don't have a planning board or, they look at me with incredulity. We're, we're a city and we don't have a planning board. I don't know, maybe that was by design at one point, but I think the five of us will be proud, plus Dan, this, this group, to get a planning board going because it's going to protect Long Beach from people that would do it harm. And it's going to make Long Beach into, I think, not a better place, but certainly we'll have a more cohesive plan for going forward. So I'm very excited. We have comments from the public or questions? Yes? You didn't have to dress up for me.
I did, I dressed up for Black History Month.
All right.
Happy Black History Month to you.
Thank you.
It's Black History Month, dressed up for, for that and I'm speaking. So welcome back. We prayed for you. Prayed for you. You know, we know you had COVID.
Appreciate it.
Prayed. And thank God that you're back. And so again, James Hodge, 95 East Fulton Street. And again, like I said, I started off, this is a very important month. 365 days is Black History because Black History is American history. So speaking about the planning advisory board, just want to know, can you just describe again the, the job that they have to do? What, what is their job?
So this is the planning board, not the planning advisory board. So the planning advisory board is separate, which is now going to be called the land use committee. Planning board will, will review developments, subdivisions, mixed use and commercial properties and anything over a three-family house, three-family parcel will be reviewed by the planning board first before it goes forward to, to be developed. There's, there's a lot more intended in that, but that's basically the.
Okay, so it's planning board, right?
Yes.
So that means commercial, different things that will be part of the Bayfront and all of those development, right? So, you know, it's important, and I don't know the dynamics of the makeup of the board. I know you said their names. I don't know exactly where they're from, but I stand as a community advocate always to advocate on behalf of North Park, a part of the city of Long Beach that has always been forgotten about, has been gentrified several times, one on Harrison Street, as we always hear Ms. Crystal Lake speak about that. And then also when Stop &amp; Shop was built, many families were pushed out and eminent domain, they were pushed out. So again, this planning board has a task. The largest portion of the city of Long Beach that's undeveloped is the Bayfront. And so whatever is planned out there, and I know that the city can get a lot of money, as Patty always talk about this being an EJ community, a Brownfield opportunity where it's contaminated and the city can get hundreds of millions of dollars for the area to remediate it. And so in remediating, I hope this planning board understands that there's a community that loves the city of Long Beach and that we don't get planned out, that we are at the table and not on the menu, that we are considered when these commercial developments are coming in to understand that we have affordable housing and many other components of North Park on the west side and the east side. And so to keep us in mind and make sure that somebody is there at the table, understanding and recognizing that all of their plans should come through the community and we should be a part of it. Because again, the largest part of the planning board position will be in that immediate community. You know, that's the most open area. And so again, I, I stand up to advocate, as we've been doing for many years, to say please, that we demand to be at the table with any development, with a CBA, Community Benefit Agreement, with different developers that may want to come in. Again, that they understand that we are here and it's not just blacks, it's not just Latinos, it's not just whites, it's everybody that lived there, but that portion of the community is generally forgotten about and not at the table.
Well said, James. And when you were saying we, I know that you mean Long Beach because we are all in it together. We is a very inclusive word, right? And that is, we have people on this board from all over Long Beach, from each section of Long Beach. So that, that, that was the point of, of this and your comments are well taken. We, meaning Long Beach, we will look out for each and every neighborhood in Long Beach because that's, that's the point of this planning board. So, well said. Thank you. Yeah, that, no, thank you.
No, you said we, you're telling me what I mean. I'm telling you, I mean the community over there.
Okay.
We is not only part of the whole beach.
Yes. Hey, Crystal.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm glad you're feeling better, Mr. Finn.
Thank you, Crystal, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Good to see you.
I think it's imperative that the planning advisory board. Crystal Lake.
Thank you.
Long Beach.
The Stickler.
I think it's imperative that every appointee, and congratulations to all of the appointees, have a true understanding of the background, especially of the demographics and the area within the North Park community. That is, that area is prime real estate, as we all know. However, based on the historic usage of all of the sites within that area, I think it's imperative that each and every member of the board have an understanding of the dynamics of what's been there, what's there and what actually could be there. If, without that information, it would be, I would definitely be remiss if I didn't say that because of the understanding that I have of the area. And possibly members of the board do not understand all of the sites that were there historically. Currently, National Grid, the Long Beach project, okay, has been ongoing for approximately since 2024. I believe it's in pause now. It has been stated over the years that that particular site could be relocated or shut down, just as the consolidation of the sewage treatment plant. One of the principal reasons for that project to occur was to three up approximately four to six acres of land. And yes, we want to see the jewel of the Bayfront, but it's imperative that it's diverse, equitable and inclusive. We see what happened with the super block of the collateral damage that has occurred. Many individuals you hear of the cost for the next 30 years. So please take into consideration of all of the, the two former inciderator sites, 59, 79, 505. That's the second one. The first one, keep in mind, there was very little regulation. Okay? And currently it's in, within the site of 59, 104, 83. So having said that, and going back to the gateway, National Grid gateway project, it appears that there was de-watering of a retired main and excavation. The project is supposed to resume in 2026. And I think that that project, there should be a presentation on that project, just to the gravity of what's occurring.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Brendan, I'd like to address her.
Yeah.
Krista, I, I agree with you and I agree on the importance of this particular planning board. That's why I'm a little, I, I guess, upset that the community really had no input into these people and even their resumes were not made public. I, I just believe this is an important thing for the entire community and it's probably one of the most important boards that we've ever appointed. And I hear what you're saying and I hear what James is saying, that you really want to be, you know, part of the, at the table, not the menu. Thank you.
You're welcome. And also I would just like to wrap it up, that being inclusive, because I'm not going to say there's a lack of knowledge, but there should be a tremendous understanding to have that jewel implemented across the board. I mean, Cameron Engineering, they proposed a wonderful project and no one's against the project as long as you have equal and fair opportunities to benefit. Okay, you had the luxury apartments, you had the taxi cabs, a maritime art educational center was proposed. Okay, restaurants and all of those things. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Crystal. I, I appreciate the historical context that you bring up about North Park and not just the historical context, but also the idea of what it could be, what it, what it might be, what it will be. So I mean, these are important considerations and as Roy said, this is, this is probably one of the most important boards that Long Beach will be impaneling. And, and for that reason, I know that Dan put a, a great deal of consideration and effort into not just the interview process, but the consultation with the people who are going to be on the board, going to be on the board, who are going to be, going to be appointed. And hopefully that's going to be tonight. Quality people from all over town, all over the city, not just one area. So I, you know, point well taken. Any other comments? Okay. Yeah, we're going to close it and then vote on it.
Okay.
Oh, do the zoning and then we'll vote both of them. One at a time.
Very good. Okay, so item three is a resolution.
Never mind. I just wanted to clarify something on the two speakers. Their hopes and goals for the Bayfront are going to be under consideration in the planning grant that this administration through Dan got this past year to study the Bayfront. And most of that grant is state money to allow us to look inclusively at all the issues that they brought up and have extensive outreach to the community.
Thank you very much, Patty.
Okay, item.
Well, no, we, we actually closed it. I'm sorry, Crystal, but I think you, you made some very good points. Thank you.
Okay, item.
Understood. Yes. Yeah, I understand.
Okay, so voting out of order. Item three is a resolution confirming the appointment of members to the planning board of the city of Long Beach. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I do.
Second?
Second.
Voting, Councilmember Bendow.
Long time coming and added welcome to our committees, yes.
Councilmember Lester.
I'm really excited about the planning board. However, I think the procedure left a lot to be desired. I think the community should have been involved and I'm going to have to vote no on this.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Very excited. Thank you for volunteering, everyone. It's, it's a lot of time away from your families and your life to betterment the community. Much appreciated, yes.
President Finn.
This is one of the main reasons why I, I ran for office and was fortunate to be elected. And as a, as a guy who grew up in Long Beach and watched what happened to this town over the last 60 years, this is a long time coming and I think we have, I know we have the right people. And thank you, Dan, for your, your hard work on it. So of course it's a yes, I'm voting.
Yeah, we'll do the zoning, Dan.
So do it after the zoning?
Yeah.
Okay. Item four is a resolution confirming the appointment of members of the zoning board of appeals of the city of Long Beach. So this item in relation to the last one is to appoint two members of the zoning board of appeals. One is to replace one of the individuals that we just voted on to put onto the planning board. The other one is to reappoint one of the members who was not sworn in in January and his time expired, I believe, right? Correct, Dave? So we have to revote him in again. So he will finish out the term that he was already appointed to and, and the other person will fill out the term to, of the person who's being chosen for the planning board.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, you may have addressed it, but I'm not sure. At the November 19th city council meeting, we voted to appoint Vinnie Leese to a term that started January of this year and.
Yep.
Expired December. And unless we're cloning Vinnie, and I don't know if his wife would like that.
So what happened was he had 30 days, I believe, to sign his, his swearing in and it did not happen in the correct period, so we have to reappoint.
So we have to revote?
Yeah, we just have to reappoint. Right now he's a holdover.
Okay. All right, Vinnie, your wife's off the hook.
Roy? Mike? Comments from the public, questions? Okay, we'll close that and.
Vote on that out of order.
Yes.
Okay, item four is a resolution confirming the appointment of members to the zoning board of appeals of the city of Long Beach. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
I'll second it.
Voting, Councilmember Bendow.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Again, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Vinnie. Thank you, Vinny. Much appreciated. Yes.
President Finn.
This is a very important part of Long Beach, or what makes Long Beach a great place. It's crucial. So thank you very much to both of you as well. Yes.
Okay. At this time, we're going to have, ask all the new members of both boards to come up to the front, to be sworn in.
Remember the we.
Sounds like a campaign slogan, James.
Remember the we. I like it. I'm going to photobomb right through here.
Yeah, we can all stand up. I say your name.
I.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Charter and Code of Law.
Charter and Code of Law.
Of the City of Long Beach.
City of Long Beach.
The faithfully discharged deputies.
The faithfully discharged deputies.
Of the Office of.
Of the Office of.
Where you did best my ability.
Where you did best my ability.
Sorry. Thank you very much. And you guys can just set some paperwork if you have something.
Come on in. We'll do it.
Barry. Barry first, if you could.
Jason. Same thing.
How far is it? I probably shouldn't hold it up. Is it next? Oh. Hold the vote. I see what he's saying. Why? It's what we did with the. That's a good idea. Let them move the, let them move the voting up for, okay? It's the snake's next up on the agenda.
That's, that's, I'm sure there's a lot of people here.
Takes the energy out. Don't forget the we. No, I already got it wrong. What did he say?
I.
What was it?
Do you guys want to, sure, then? I did this time, finally get the sign.
That's a good idea.
Let them move the, let them move the voting up for, okay? It's the snake's next up on the agenda.
That's, that's, I'm sure there's a lot of people here.
Takes the energy out. Don't forget the we. No, I already got it wrong. What did he say?
I.
Oh. What is it?
Do you guys want to, sure, then? I did this time, finally get the sign.
Okay. Okay. Onto our next item on the calendar. So item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter to a new lease agreement between the City of Long Beach and MLK Center Incorporated.
So this item is probably the most important one of the night. It's one that I've been working on almost daily since I was appointed as city manager about a year ago. I will say, the MLK Board has worked hard over the last year to get this agreement finalized, and I would like to thank everyone involved for making this happen, including our great city workers, the MLK management, community leaders, and the community in general. This agreement puts past issues behind us and gets the MLK Center back to providing a service to the community, as was its original intent. Again, let's be clear. The MLK Center was formed to provide a service. Although no agreement will ever be perfect to all stakeholders, I do believe that this agreement balances the impacts and costs to the city with the benefits provided to the community. We must get back to providing services to our children, our elderly, and the community in general, as I said, as per its original intention. I really believe this agreement does that, and I thank everyone involved once again, and I recommend that we approve this agreement tonight. Thank you.
I'll just start off with a comment, and then there'll be questions, I'm sure. Once again, this is a we situation. The Martin Luther King Center is an essential part of the North Park community, and, but it's also an essential part of Long Beach. So we all gain when the Martin Luther King Center is, is working and, and firing on all cylinders. And when it's not, Long Beach is not doing well, and certainly, North Park either. So this is something, just like the recreation center on Magnolia or the beach. If it's, if it's not working well, then we have to, we have to fix it. I appreciate what Dan has worked hard on doing. I, I don't have questions about the contract, but I think they, that we do. So, John, do you want to start, or do you have, do you have a question?
Sure, I can start. Is Marcia or Sheri here? Can, can you guys come up? I just want to. Okay. Sounds like it's on. I'll just talk closer. So I just, and thanks, guys, for, for coming. I know this has been a, a lot of work, and I just wanted to say, so as, as part of this, as part of this agreement, the city is also making an investment in MLK Inc. as well. You know, we're, we're assisting at the building with, with utilities and, and maintenance and things like that. So I was, what I was hoping you could maybe do for the benefit of the, the people listening, the MLK obviously has faced some challenges the last few years, and the two of you are working very hard to get the MLK, to, to Brendan's point, firing on all cylinders. So I wonder, maybe you could just talk a little about the exciting things you're doing there at the center, and, and to reinvigorate it.
Well, thank you, Sheena Curry, the chair of the MLK Center. Yes, we have.
So you gotta keep the mic right up on, yeah, right on your mouth there, because that, you gotta talk right like this, yeah.
Okay. Sheena Curry, the chair of the MLK Center. Yes, we have a number of programs, services that we are planning on launching at the MLK Center once this lease is signed. We have the enrichment program that we have kids already enrolled. We have a food pantry that I'm in discussion with Pastor TK, the partner with Pastor TK and the soup kitchen, so we can have a food pantry there on Saturday. We also have the music room, and we're running a number of media programs. We have the computer room that we hope to raise the money to start a robotics program to get our kids prepared for the, all of the jobs that's available through AI and robotics. And we also have a culinary arts program that we're starting. I also spoke with Deborah from the Department of Aging through Anissa Moore, and we also are working on a couple of grants to get funding for our senior program. We also just applied for the Michael Jordan grant. We also applied for the NF, the MBA grant that was out that Dan's wife sent us, so we applied for both of those grants yesterday. We received $100,000 for a grant that Dan was at, that we went to pitch for our culinary arts. We received $100,000. We also have the income tax program that we have at the MLK Center, that we do income tax. And we also received a $19,000 grant from the IRS. So we are applying for grants. We only have, we had a holdup because we need a lease, because most of the grants that you apply for, you need a lease and you need an audit. And we also are conducting the first audit of the MLK Center, and hopefully, that'll be finalized in a couple of weeks. So that's everything that we're doing at the MLK Center to get it up and running.
That's very nice.
And, and that was, that was my point. I wanted to show that this is an investment that's paying dividends for the, for the people of the city, to, to get the, the organization to be vibrant and supporting the community. So thank you. That's, that's what I.
Thank you, Sharon.
Yeah, well. Thank you. And I guess I apologize, I got some, some technical contract questions for our Corporation Council office person. So.
Joe Lupo.
Joe Lupo.
Come on down.
I'm here. The king.
So, and, so the new version we were sent earlier today of the contract, the extensions went from that the MLK Center would request a five-year extension at the end of the 30 months, and this, and city would say yea or nay, you know, after, after discussing it with them. Now it's an automatic extension. So can you explain the purpose of the change?
Yes. How are you? Joe Lupo, Deputy Corporation Counsel. So when we were negotiating the contract, Sheena and myself went back and forth a few times, also with their attorney, you know, Dan Creighton really spearheaded the whole thing. And when they came back, they said, hey, listen, we would love just a sign of good faith, that you have a reinvigorated faith in us, that if we're doing the right thing, that, you know, if one or two people just don't like us, that we still are going to be able to stay in the building. And I was like, well, what do you have in mind? And they said, well, we would like it at our sole discretion. And I said, well, I don't know if that's fair, because you know what? We have, you know, like, like, again, we want a little bit of a sign of good faith. So now, what we came to was, we will allow, you know, the lease to automatically renew as long as the lease is not being breached in, in any way. So as long as they're, you know, adhering to all the terms of the lease, then there'd be no reason for us to not renew it. And if we feel that they're not, then we will provide them with documentary evidence, give them an opportunity to cure, and if they don't cure, then we could discuss it then.
Okay. So we essentially aren't giving a 12 and a half year lease, since it's an automatic renewal?
Well, no. It's an automatic renewal so long as they are adhering to the guidelines of the lease.
Right. Because in Section 2A, we remove the landlord's right to grant or deny an extension request.
Correct.
So that, that's, so as long as they're adhering to the lease, it's a 12 and a half year lease?
Correct.
Okay. In Section 2B, so this is one of the things we've discussed for a few years now, given the MLK Inc. the opportunity to buy the building and, and run it themselves. So there's clause in there that allows them to do that. What, but what isn't addressed is that if they buy the building and then turn around and try to resell it.
Actually, it is.
This, this, no, no. What I'm saying is, the city has the right then to take the building back.
I'm sorry. Yes, correct.
So, in other words, they can't make a profit motive of buying the building and then selling it for more.
Yeah. I mean, and, and they understood that during negotiations, that, you know, the city wouldn't be willing to sell them a building for a dollar, and then they're going to go and mortgage it for.
But my question, so the question there, though, is, what it doesn't, the lease currently doesn't address is buying the building and then they lease it to someone.
That's a good point. It does not. So if they bought the building for the dollar, and at that point, they're paying all the taxes, paying all the utilities, everything, all the costs associated with maintaining the building, then yes, they could lease the building. But, but there's another, so if you look at 2B, which actually continues on to the following page, they could purchase the building, not in fee simple. What in fee simple means is, that's how you bought your house. You own it no matter what, it's your home, as long as you pay your taxes, your mortgage, whatever, it's yours. What I did was, I created a language called a fee simple subject to two conditions subsequent. The first condition subsequent, they purchase the building, it has to remain a community center. So if they lease the building to some, to another entity, I don't, United Way, or whatever, right? As long as it was still going to maintain, to be maintained as a community center, and that sublease, if you will, you know, yeah, it was doing all the same things that they were doing, sure, they could lease it.
Okay. Let's see. Okay. In Section 7A, it talks about that if there's damage to the building or equipment, it's the sole risk at, of the tenant. But then in that same section, it goes on to say that the city is paying for the insurance on the building, which seems to be a conflict.
So, two things there. First off, there's, if you go to the next page, which is, I'm sorry, Section 7C, requires the MLK Center Inc. to have general liability insurance. If there's any injuries, trips and falls, catastrophic events where somebody does something negligently, and God forbid, a stove blows up, whatever, they have to insure for the general liability for $3 million. With respect to the city's property, the city doesn't insure each one of its buildings separately. We pay one insurance premium for all of our properties. So for us, you know, to, because it's still our building, yeah, you know, it's still under our policy, and if we just excluded the one building, to be, to be quite honest with you, I didn't ask our insurance counsel to look at the difference in funding, but what I did was, I did send an email to, to our broker, and he said it would be nominal at best. So just because we're leasing a building, we wouldn't pull our insurance from it, because it's still our asset.
Okay. So in Section 12B, one of the, I guess, I guess I'll say how we're making this a partnership, because again, we're making significant financial investment here, is that the city was going to get to choose someone to, to be on the MLK Board, MLK Inc. Board. That's now been changed, that, that, that doesn't happen for six months. Why was that changed?
Well, it's not that it can't happen until six months, but in negotiations, Sheena, correct me if I'm wrong, she was like, you know, we just don't want somebody that's going to be, for lack of a better term, antagonized, or that could be rammed down our throat. So we would like to, you know, really have a little bit of input into who the person is. So we said, listen, there's going to be seven board members. You know, if you don't like who we pick, you have.
negligently and God forbid, a stove blows up or whatever, they have to insure for the general liability for three million. With respect to the city's property, the city doesn't insure each one of its buildings separately. We pay one insurance premium for all of our properties. So for us, you know, to, because it's still our building, yeah, you know, it's still under our policy. And if we just excluded the one building, to be, to be quite honest with you, I didn't ask our insurance counsel to look at the difference in funding. But what I did was I did send an email to, to our broker and he said it would be nominal at best. So just because we're leasing a building, we wouldn't pull our insurance from it because it's still our asset.
Okay. So in Section 12B, one of the, I guess, I guess I'll say how we're making this a partnership because again, we're making significant financial investment here is that the city was going to get to choose someone to, to be on the MLK Board, MLK Inc. Board. That's now been changed that, that, that doesn't happen for six months. Why was that changed?
Well, it's not that it can't happen until six months, but in negotiations, Sheena, correct me if I'm wrong, she was like, you know, we just don't want somebody that's going to be, for lack of a better term, antagonizer that could be rammed down our throat. So we would like to, you know, really have a little bit of input into who the person is. So we said, listen, there's going to be seven board members. You know, if you don't like who we pick, you have six. We have one. You could really just box that person out. But as a sign of good faith, we said, all right, we'll let you guys get up and running on your feet after we sign this, this lease agreement for the first six months because to your point, as long as everything is going good, this is going to be twelve and a half years, right? So for the first six months, it's really just a nominal amount of time. And then as an additional, you know, sign of good faith, Ms. Curry was like, well, you know, again, we don't want an antagonizer. And I said, well, we don't want an antagonizer either. So if we have somebody on the board that we appoint that is really not being a productive collaborative member of that board, document it and we will essentially give you like a vote of no confidence. And if you show us documented evidence of why this person is now a hindrance and no longer supporting the board and the board's mission, we will replace that person with someone else.
Okay. I guess this is a more of administrative. There's a Section 17 and then a Section 19. There's no Section 18. So you've got to just fix the section numbers.
I will make that correction.
Okay. Section 17H, previously there was, and I, I think I'm going to know what you're going to say, but it was, there was a clause in there that this, the city determined that building was needed for governmental purposes, that the city could, you know, take the building. Now that's been removed. I guess that's to protect the, the rights of the MLK Inc.
Excuse me. So this is, you know, obviously, as you see, this is a lease agreement. It's not a license agreement. If we did a license agreement, a license agreement actually ordinarily doesn't have a set term, two years, 12 years, whatever the case may be. License agreements ordinarily go for a certain set duration but are terminable upon written notice. This is a lease, right? So the whole value of a lease is the guaranteed time that you have in the facility.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roy, I'm sure you have questions?
Yeah. So Joe, most of these changes were made this afternoon, correct?
Not exactly, Mr. Lester. The changes actually, so this, I believe, was supposed to be on an earlier agenda for an, an earlier meeting this year. And at that time, the lease, what, which we also, which we thought was going to be finalized, but it wasn't signed yet. That's what was provided to the council, I believe, last month. Since that had happened, MLK Center's attorney reviewed the lease. They came back to us. We reviewed their changes and it was all determination that even though some of the changes, you know, might seem like they benefit the MLK Center Inc. a touch more, that they really didn't substantively or materially, materially change the effect of the lease. So obviously we accepted those changes and we signed on. Unfortunately, due to a lack of internal communication, it wasn't realized that the new lease wasn't sent to you until today.
Didn't we have that same thing happen last month too?
I do not know.
Yeah. Same thing happened last month.
I believe it was on the concessions where Steve didn't put it out. So, but this happened this afternoon. I mean, basically, I know an email was sent out with the new lease at 106. We weren't notified that we got, that there was an email and, you know.
Admit it. Yes.
And so I know you don't feel it's substantial changes. I feel that the city gave up a lot here. Now, don't get me wrong. I'm really happy that we finally have a lease or, you know, the makings of a lease. Yes, I'm upset that, you know, I was given it late in the afternoon and told, these are the changes after having gone through the other one. And, you know, of course, you're saying they're not substantial. I think they're substantial. But I think the thing that bothers me the most about this is the purchase of a piece of property worth between five and, between three and five million dollars for one dollar. And New York state law does not allow that.
I believe that you're going to be referring to the New York State Constitution, the gifts and loans provision. And I understand that, however, there are multiple, multiple case law examples that I can provide to you, not off the top of my head, but I can provide it to you, that if the city or municipality is going to provide a gift for the public benefit or public purpose, it is actually upheld and it is allowed.
Okay. Not from what I'm seeing. Plus the fact that because it's a not-for-profit, they would sell it back. That has to be petitioned to the Attorney General before they can do that.
I'm sorry, you mean sell it back what, to us, you mean?
Yes.
Well, if we have an agreement with them where they bought the building from us for a dollar, but as a part of that agreement, we have a right of first refusal. If they ever want to sell it, then we get it back for the same one dollar.
I understand that, but we're buying it back.
Well.
And buying it back when you're buying from a not-for-profit, the not, that has to go to the Attorney General.
I am one of those people, Mr. Lester, that I am really confident about the things I know and very honest about things I'm not sure about. And honestly, I'm not sure about that, but I have no problems looking into it and getting back to you on that.
Well, you know, you're asking me to vote on a lease that I don't think is legal at this point. That's the problem. I love the lease. I love the idea. You know, I, I know.
I understand that we disagree.
It's an affordable lease for MLK right now. Oh, and it, which reminds me, I just have a question. At the bottom of the lease, the lease is being signed by, hold on a second. I'm sorry. The lease is being signed by Shereen Curry on behalf of MLK Inc., but I thought the tenant was MLK Center Inc.
No, the, the center is the Martin Luther King Jr., Martin Luther King Center. The tenant is Martin Luther King Incorporated.
Yes. Well, it's listed as the tenant, MLK Center Inc.
Yes.
And the lease is being signed on behalf of MLK Inc.
If you go to the very first paragraph of the lease.
Yeah, no, I saw that.
Okay. So.
The very first paragraph.
If there's a scribbler's error that says that, you know, that misnames, it's, okay. So that scribbler's error, if the resolution is passed, can be corrected just by the authority of Dan Creighton.
I was just curious about that. I didn't know if there were two different corporations.
No, sir.
Or not. But the, and I also asked, I wasn't able to get an answer on this. Basically, we're paying utilities. We're paying for the maintenance. We're paying for the repairs. We're paying for, you know, just about everything. And theoretically, there's no control over the utilities. I mean, you know, if, if the utilities, if somebody left their air conditioning on all the time or somebody put the heat, that's just going to increase it. There's no way we can do anything about that according to this lease. Am I correct?
So with respect to the utilities for the past, at least 25 years, this is exactly how it's been the entire time. With respect to if they're going to leave the heat on, that's pretty much a misuse. Let's say they leave the heat on in the summer. That's a misuse of the resources. And they would be responsible to at least cure the defect if we let them know.
I don't see that in the lease.
You don't see that there's a cure period?
No.
Okay.
The, what have they used in utilities over the last few years? Anybody know?
That's not something that I have.
Approximately twenty-five thousand a year.
I'm sorry?
Approximately twenty-five thousand a year.
For heat or?
For all utilities.
Water and, well, they don't.
No, they don't pay water. It's, it's electric and gas.
Electric and gas, twenty-five thousand a year. That's not, not too bad. And how much have we put into repairs?
I don't have that number available.
Russell, do you? Does anybody know what we, I know we've done a lot.
I know at one point, there was an air conditioning unit and I believe that we had, I believe, I'm pretty sure we had grant funding for that. All right. Thank you, Pat. Ms. Bourne just confirmed that when the air conditioning unit was replaced, we had community development money.
No, I, I, you know, that was another question I asked. How much of what we paid was from community development money and how much was from the city money?
I don't have those figures.
Yeah.
So the funding that I'm aware of is that we received FEMA funding for the hardening of the building for flood proofing.
The hazard mitigation.
Hazard mitigation project, correct? That was roughly a million dollars, give or take.
So that, but that was FEMA money. That wasn't from the city?
Correct. Yeah, that's FEMA funded.
Yeah. I was trying to differentiate what the city put in, you know, what grants come, you know, that's fine. That's going to go there regardless. But I, that's what I was trying to determine. Because let's be honest, it is, our job is to represent the taxpayers too, not just North Park, but the taxpayers too. And this is a valuable piece. And it does, as James said, it serves a great function for the community. And, you know, years ago, when Ms. Odom was in charge, this place was unbelievable. And a lot of kids, it benefited a lot of kids. And it sounds to me like it's getting back there. You know, it's now going to be a centerpiece. But I did, I guess I'm upset that, you know, we got hit with this a couple of hours before a meeting with a, basically what I consider a new lease. And I do have questions about the legality of the one dollar. So, thank you, Joe.
Can I just make one more point, Mr. Lester?
Sure.
With respect to the lease being mailed out late, if that's, if anyone has to be blamed, I take full responsibility for that. I should have communicated that in my office internally. So I'm sorry about that. In addition, the sale of the building for one dollar, I mean, if, if you were really going to look into the gifts and loans provision, right? I mean, I think that if we thought that that was valid here, then leasing that building for two thousand dollars a month also wouldn't, wouldn't be valid. But because it's for such a.
That's not true, Joe, because.
Two thousand a year?
It's a, for a specific purpose.
That's why I think that the dollar is also.
But that's, but that's not the same with the sale.
Okay. What we tried to do, and Dan made it very clear, is we wanted to find a mutually agreeable lease that the MLC, excuse me, MLK Inc. could actually comply with. We didn't want to create a lease that pretty much put us at odds for the next twelve and a half years. We wanted to work collaboratively. That was the goal.
I understand that. And it's, it sounds like the lease did that. But the, you know, I, I just question whether selling a five million dollar building for one dollar is proper for the taxpayers, is proper for a city. Leasing, I can understand. They're performing a function. But now we're talking about millions of dollars of taxpayer money.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mike has a question. Don't go away.
I'm sorry.
Well, I, for me, it's, it's more of a comment really. Speaking as a parent and a taxpayer, we need places for our kids to go. When I first came to this position, it was one of the first topics I talked with our city manager about. We needed to get the MLK Center out of eviction court. This is an historic building. It serves an incredible purpose for the community. It's a beacon of light for that community and we can't turn the lights off. We have the power to do that. So I really, I really want this council to settle this. And I, I really want to thank Sheree, Dan, Joe, everybody who's worked for over six months on this. It's, it's, it's getting back into the hands of the community and the, and the administration. And it's gotten here by working together. And that's what we need to continue to do. So, thank you.
You know, just one thing that I thought was.
So Joe, I, I don't want to go over your head, but I'm going to ask Frank, as, as our Corporation Counsel, stay right there. Because I don't want people to think that we just willy-nilly just decided, oh, this looks like a great lease and didn't look at it. Right? We go by the Corporation Counsel, our legal advisors, as to whether something is going to be a legal document or not, whether we're going to use it or not. So I spoke with Frank, but Frank will comment on it as well.
Roy has a valid point. Enough, can you hear me? Roy has a valid point. He didn't get the changes that were, that were, were made to the lease. In my opinion, they're, they're not significant. However, that's my opinion. By the way, Joe, you're fired, you know? And, you know, he may be right about when you have a not-for-profit and wants to sell something, you may have the involvement with the Attorney General's office. But if they were going to sell it to somebody, they would have to do that anyway, if, if that was the case. And my answer is, so what? So what? If that's the case, we'll deal with it. The reason why a lot of these things are in the lease is because we're trying not to beat them on the head because they're struggling to survive. And the city has a lot of power and we don't want to exert all that power. We want to get them out of court and we want to get them running and get these kids some, some relief. And that's really the, the, the background of, of the way it went. And Joe and Dan worked with the MLK, in my opinion, with, with more compassion than the legal expertise that they could have thrown at this thing. So that's my opinion.
Frank, I do have.
Frank?
Appreciate it. I'm sorry. I do have one question, Frank. Is there anything in this lease that would have been ineffective or diminished if we didn't have that sale? The one dollar sale in there? Anything?
Would have been.
Anything in this lease that they couldn't have done? Anything that would have been different in this lease if we didn't have that one dollar sale provision?
No, it's, it's, it's an option. It's an option for them to buy. It may be a, a goal for them to, to work towards. You know, it, it could be something like that. But that's not a really a legal answer that you're looking for. Your, your answer is, I agree, Roy. It wouldn't make a difference. It's just another, it's another benefit for the, for the MLK.
Roy, just a shallow dive that I did. The City of New York has a tradition of selling unused property for one dollar to incentivize development, encourage nonprofit developers to apply for lots and free city maintenance costs.
Unused. Unused.
No, no. But there's other properties in there. So that's just a shallow dive. I'm sure if we do a deep dive, we'll come up with a lot more, right?
It's not permitted.
Comments from the public? Questions?
Can I have one?
Yes. Come on up. You come right up to the mic. You're no stranger to this mic. Come on.
Andrea Gatto, Riverside Boulevard.
Just to bring the mic.
Andrea Gatto, Riverside Boulevard. I just want to make a quick comment because I'm, I'm the former director. Roy, when the City of Long Beach controls all of the utilities remotely, I just want to make that clear. The cooling, the heating, everything is controlled remotely.
I'm glad you told me that.
So, yes.
I'd feel much better.
Well, you were saying, what if they leave the lights on, everything is controlled remotely. If we need more heat, more cooling, anything that agrees, we have to call the City of Long Beach. We have to call Tommy Kanner and ask him to.
Oh, you poor person.
Well, no, it's, but I'm trying to tell you that the city does have control over certain things.
That's great. You just made me happy.
Thank you. I'm glad you're happy. You don't look it.
Thank you. Yes. I'm sorry. I didn't see. I'll get you next. Sorry about that. No, you come on up. Yeah, please.
Grace and peace, gentlemen. LaRon West, 643 Shore Road. In the Bible, there was a prophet named Habakkah who lived in the midst of political chaos, threats of war, and witnessed much injustice beginning in his ministry. He cries out to God. The Lord replied, "Look around at the nations. Look and be amazed, for I am doing something in your own day, something you wouldn't believe, even if someone told you about it." Injustice still ruins lives and nations today. But don't let that reality cause you to doubt God or rebel against Him. Like Habakkah, our community cries out to the city council, "How long will it take for us all to come together and do what is right in the Lord's eyes and finalize the lease with the MLK Center? How long?"
Thank you. Yes. That's a tough act to follow.
Well, that's what it looks like up here. Hi, I'm Barbara Horn. I live on Broadway in Long Beach. And I just want to say that I think after the library, one of the most important buildings in our beloved city is the Dr. Martin Luther King Center. He came here. He walked our streets. He visited with us. And in a few short weeks after that, we lost him. So I think it's vital for us to have a building that can teach the children and the generations to come about, about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll get you next, James. Is that James?
Terrence.
Good evening.
Good evening. Terrence Harris. I want to thank the council for doing what you're doing for this lease. These kids really need it, and you guys, Dan, you guys are doing an excellent job in helping with this lease. I thank you personally, and I'm a volunteer there. I volunteer with the fire department also. So, I've been around since '79 volunteering. So, these kids really appreciate it, okay? There's a lot of hearsay out there about different things that the council's doing, but only thing we hear is good things that the council wants to do with the MLK Center. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Voice in the back. Is that it? We'll let the ladies speak first. Now, let the ladies speak.
To the city council and to Dan Creighton, the city manager. I stand here as one of the ones that was responsible for building the MLK Center. When I see that we have, at this time, that we're able to work with the city council and the MLK Center, it brings joy. I can go back to say the days that when we were on our feet and we were doing well, we failed. And it brings great joy to me today to see that we're beginning to bring MLK back. I have years of experience of how many boys and girls that come through the MLK Center that have degrees now that's given back to the MLK Center. This is a hub for us. It's a nursing for our community and the whole city of Long Beach. I want to personally thank you for this opportunity to see this day come, that the MLK Center is getting back on their feet. Roy, as far as the $1 deal, when we sit down from the federal government to the state and to the city, it was written originally in a lease that we will have that building for $1. In 1900, they had a clause that was $1 clause in real estate. So, that's give us hope and give us a dream that one day we might own that building. Don't ever underestimate us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with the hand up in the back. Oh, okay.
Longtime chair, this is Jacquetta Odom. And there's many people that have been part of the history of the MLK. Again, James Hodge. What I will say is that as we advocated for a couple of years now, a couple of months for the center to be taken out of eviction court, and made many appeals, and spoke to Dan and city council members many times to work on a lot of things. I believe because the city has had them in eviction court, they have negotiated some of the things that is on the lease that the community really only saw about an hour ago, because I don't think it was fair that you guys did not have a community meeting. The city and the MLK Board, truly, the MLK, the Board and the city is holding to the community. That's a community place, and the community should always have engagement and involvement with any and every decision that happens. And so, with the community not being at the table, and with community members not having input, and really not knowing some of the things that the whole community here is agreeing to, that the city can just take, you know, decide within a week that we're taking over the center and putting a program in there, no matter what you guys have scheduled. There's a lot of thi, there's certain things in-
That's not true. That's not true, James. Go ahead.
Let him go. Keep going, James.
Okay, so, if you look at the backup document, you will see a lot of things in the lease. You will see a lot of things that personally, I believe, may hurt the center in the long run. It's in the lease. You know it, right? And some of these things we spoke about. Whether you agree or not, you know, did you have anything to say?
No, no, I, I think you're misreading the lease, but you're entitled to your opinion.
Can the city make a decision to bring in programs and do what they want to do?
Not without the, we can only use unprogrammed time, and we can program that time. We do not have the ability to stop programmed time.
You know it's not read like that in the-
Joe, would you like to approach that? Because I know, I know for a fact you're wrong in this, but it's-
No, no, no. Hey, how are you? So, in, the big part about negotiating a lease and the programming was collaboration, right? And, and we want collaboration. So, what we settled on was, at first it was, we asked for, every month, a schedule of programming, just so we could, so we could see when the building wasn't being used, so we could also see the programs being ran, so we didn't duplicate programs and also fill, fill the slots. And then, when MLK, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Excuse me. When Sheena came back, she was just like, listen, that's not realistic, because certain programs run longer than a month. Some, you know, there might be like a one-off or a spin-off, so-
Certain programs run throughout the year.
Sure, sure. So, how's about we just, we'll like give you our word, that we will let you know ahead of time what the program's schedule is, and we will collaborate as far as the unused time. So, there's nothing in there that says, for example, that if on Thursday nights at 4:00 I want to use the gym, or the city wants to use the gym, and the MLK Center Inc. wants to use the gym, that the city prevails.
You have to give a certain period of time.
Well, it's not even about, it's not even about a certain period of time.
From the lease.
No, no, I understand. I think that you read the wrong lease, because remember what I said-
Wait, so you redid the lease within a couple of hours? Within an hour?
Did you, but, did you not hear? I'm sorry.
No, I know, but I'm saying-
I'm not being a wise guy here. What I'm saying is-
Joe, let's stop debating this right now. Let him finish his, let him finish his time up at the mic, and let's stop this now.
No, no, it's, we're discussing, because we've never had a discussion.
Finish your, finish your thoughts, and then we'll, well, I could, I could talk to you after this. I've talked to you before this, James.
No, what I'm saying, the, the community never got a chance to hear some of the things that's in the lease, and so this-
If you don't mind finishing up, James, please.
Can you answer the question?
Well, no, he's, 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 he's not going to answer the question.
So, you're directing him not to answer a question as a taxpayer?
I'm not directing anybody to do anything.
So, I'm asking him to finish what he was saying. You just stopped him from answering.
I'm asking you to finish your statement.
Okay, I finished my statement. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, with that?
Mr. Decranus, I've never been disrespectful to you. Don't do that to me. Go ahead. Okay, so he said the new lease is up on the website. So, again, I'll say this, that we've advocated, we fought, we worked hard to get some type of lease. I just believe that there's some things in it. And truthfully, I didn't get a chance to look at all of the new things that was just put, because nobody in the community really saw all of the things. I continuously advocate, if this lease is signed, one of the things is that you promised that it will be taken out of eviction court, correct? Do you promise that the MLK will be taken out of eviction court if this lease is signed? And I think the city council will have to answer-
Mr. Hodge, I can answer that question for you. If this lease is signed by both parties-
Hold on one second. Go ahead.
It is moot. The eviction court proceeding will be deemed moot, because what it says is we settled it.
Okay. Okay, so, thank you. This is what we fought for, that the eviction proceedings will be taken out. And so, again, I just say that it's important that we vote, but the community know that we're, what we're voting for and agreeing to, all right?
Thank you.
So, I think it probably should be a community meeting, and we should come together and look at all the details, just not, just say yes, just to say yes.
You want me to just read quick the section that talks about?
Just, uh-
James Hodgson, 66, East Fulton Street, Long Beach, New York. Quick question for the corporation council. When you were negotiating this lease, I believe that the MLK Center was represented by one of the best attorneys probably in all of New York State, Frederick Bruington, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How many times would you say approximately that lease was bounced from yourself to Fred Bruington to the MLK Board? Just approximately, you don't have to go.
Just so you know, I wasn't acting in a, with the eviction proceeding, I didn't represent the city. We had outside counsel.
I'm talking about just with the lease.
I'm just talking about the lease.
Yeah, so the lease, I do not know how often the MLK Board sent it to Mr. Bruington.
That's between him and his client.
Okay. All right. So, this is, this is the thing here, you know, with, with getting this, getting the lease done, is that it, a lot of those kids are going to be smiling after this lease is done, you know? And I've been around that MLK, I'm 54 years old, I've been around that MLK since I was a little kid, and you know, my mother didn't have, and I know the central services that Mrs. Odom used to provide to us, and you know, when we didn't have money, how we would eat, we would go there to a lunch program. And I think with this lease, you know, and a lot of kids do ask that, you know, will we be kicked out of the MLK Center? So, I know a lot of kids, a lot of adults is smiling tonight. My thing is this, I'm not blaming you guys. The MLK should have never been in eviction court to begin with. Should have never been in eviction court. And I do have to remember this. I do have to mention this. I am a part of the Democratic Party my whole life, and it was five Democrats that set up there, just like you guys, that put us in eviction court. So, if we're going to talk, we need to speak truth to facts, you know? I've dealt with you, Dan, I haven't dealt with you guys, but you know, it's an honor and a pleasure to, you know, deal with Sheena. I volunteer to feed the seniors. You see me there. I volunteer to feed our kids every single day, and we don't have funds. We do it, Marshall puts some money together, Sheena puts some money, Henry Hall will give some money, I'll give some money to feed these kids. And Terrence, you know, he bought the ribs. But to, you know, to, to finalize this lease, this is, this is, this is a great day for, for Long Beach, because the only thing, it's not only Long Beach, Martin Luther King didn't see eyes. He only, I mean, color, he only saw the human race. That building is great for you, it's great for me, it's great for my kids, it's great for your grandmother, it's great for my aunt, it's great for your aunt, it's great for every single person, and not only black people. So, I'm going to say it again. I know, I know that this lease was negotiated, and like I said, Fred Bruington has to be one of the best civil rights attorneys out there, and I know Judge Decranus knows that. I know most of you, all of you guys know that. So, I'm pretty for sure, when he told them to sign this lease, it's a great deal, and I'm more than for sure, one of the best attorneys on the panel ain't going to say, "Sign something," and you're going to be in the blind signing it. So, that's what I have to say, and I say that the entire city council, Roy, I heard some of your questions, that dollar proposal, highly doubt the city would sell it because of the tax implications. You buy a building for a dollar, that's worth 500, $5 million, you're going to pay 100 times that in taxes if you buy it for a dollar. So, I'm going to ask the city council-
100 times?
Yeah. I don't know how many times. I'm not good at math. I fail math.
Thank, thank you very much.
I'm going to ask the whole entire city council, even my Democratic buddies, just, let's make this right, and just vote yeah across the board to this lease.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Oh, a frequent flyer.
Hi, Mahaal Zakai, 321 West Beach. So, what exactly is this doing? Are we like leasing the property? Are we, are we selling the property? What's happening?
Leasing.
It's a, it's a lease, so-
So, what's the, what's the $1 thing?
That's, that's, down the road, if the corporate, if the incorporated group feels that they have the wherewithal to buy the building, the city could sell it to them for a dollar.
Why only a dollar?
It's actually an act of good faith from the city. You'll get your cut.
Okay.
Thanks a lot. Thank you. All right, we could close that up? All right, we'll move on. We're going to vote on it, right?
Vote now?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to vote on item 5 out of order? So, item 5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a new lease agreement between the City of Long Beach and the MLK Center, Inc. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
Second.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
So, I have emails going back more than five years about trying to get a lease for the MLK Center signed. And I'll, I guess I'll just say, we ran into a lot of roadblocks, and it wasn't until Andrea showed up that we had a partner that we could work with. And then Marcia and Sheena have taken up the mantle and have made it so we can reestablish that partnership between the city and MLK, Inc. And I guess I want to thank the three of you for helping get us to this point, because this is something that's been percolating for a long time and shouldn't have taken this long. So, I happily vote yes on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Lester?
Oh, boy. Listen, I have waited for this day for a long time. I particularly like the MLK Center, and I think they've done a phenomenal job. But I'm an attorney, and I'm sworn to uphold the law, and I believe this lease, when it comes to the dollar, which is absolutely, there's no reason for it, you heard it, there's no reason for it. I don't, I do not believe, based on the New York State Comptrollers, their opinions, the law, the Constitution, I do not believe that part is legal, and I hate the fact that it could potentially screw up the lease. I don't think anybo, guys, I'm speaking, all right? I don't think that there's any reason that MLK would ever buy it, because right now, as it goes, the city's paying all the utilities, all the maintenance and stuff, and if MLK had to buy it, they would have to take all that on, plus pay taxes on the building. And it just doesn't make sense to me. Why it's in the lease makes no sense to me. Nobody would want to take on additional, additional costs to do exactly the same thing, because the way it's written, you still have to do the same thing, even if you pay the dollar. I just think it destroys the legitimacy of the lease. A lease that I have waited so long for, and I would so much like to, to support. But because of that one clause, I don't think it's possible. So, I have to vote no.
Councilmember Reinhart?
I, I think I made my point rather clear in my comments before, especially as a parent, there's not enough places for our kids to go. We don't have a movie theater right now. We need to keep our kids busy, we need to keep them in programs. I'm not going to waste everybody's time. Emphatic yes.
President Finn?
So, the idea of the community, the community commenting and having input is really an important part of this whole thing. That's why we are here now. This is our community meeting, this is our community, and Martin Luther King Community Center is an integral part of Long Beach. I'm obviously voting yes.
Now, the item fails because it requires four affirmative votes. Why? It requires a supermajority, because it is the lease of property as per the charter.
Can we amend, take that part out, and that way I can change my vote?
Amend what?
Amend the $1 thing.
I, they would have to agree to that, or we could vote again next meeting.
Yeah, it's going to have to go back on for next meeting.
I mean, I don't understand why they would make the lease invalid. I mean, that's something-
No, you wouldn't understand that.
Well, you didn't understand that it was a supermajority, so, I mean, what are we talking about?
You know what? We were told it was not a supermajority.
We weren't told that.
I know, I know-